Okay, good evening. Welcome to the November Board of Education meeting tonight. We're going to begin. Before we start, we have a couple of items that we need to adjust on the agenda. Under 4E, we need to add a $200 track donation from the class of 1955. That will be under the consent agenda. And then after item 8, we will add 8A. And we will call that calendar discussion. And then we are going to remove the executive session for negotiations. So unless there's anything else to add, I would accept a motion to adopt.
Okay.
Okay. Motion by Patty, seconded by Gina, to adopt the agenda. All in favor? Opposed? Six oh. Okay. And then we have the delegation. We have none. So moving on, we will do the consent agenda. Under that, we have the minutes of the regular meeting on October 11th, and the special meeting on October 22nd, and the payment of the bills, the treasures report, the clerk's report. We need to accept an anonymous donation of $10,000 to the track fund and a $200 donation from the class of 1955. So we thank those that want to remain anonymous and the class of 1955.
I move we accept the consent agenda.
Okay.
All second.
Motion by Gina, seconded by Deb, to approve the items listed on the consent agenda consisting of: the minutes of the regular meeting of October 11th, 2021, and the special meeting on October 22nd, 2021; payment of the bills, the treasures report, the clerk's report, and accept an anonymous track donation in the amount of $10,000 and a $200 track donation from the class of 1955. Any discussion? All in favor? Six oh.
Do you know where they are with the track fund? They seem to be making a little bit of progress.
We're probably pushing 40,000. Probably around 40,000. Okay. Are we ready for Summers, Spencer, and company?
Okay, but we go try, I don't know. I can get them to not.
We're in a bit of a hold waiting for a Zoom link from Summers, Spencer, and company, so. All wondering on the location. Okay. Okay. Get back to regular scheduled programming shortly.
I have emails from them, they asked if they'd call, so yes, and they called.
And if they join the Zoom, I can like.
So we'll just wait for them?
Yeah, we'll just, whenever they come along, we can stop and give it to them. So thank you.
Yes, thanks. If that's okay with everybody, we'll continue on. Okay. We're going to wait on the auditors. When they join us, we will come back to item 5 on your agenda. Moving on to number 6, we need to approve a field trip to Union Station to visit the Holocaust display.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity with the Holocaust display at Union Station. Mr. Wolting is asking for permission to take some of his social studies kids to that. I've already checked with the insurance company. If you remember, we had issues with crossing the Nebraska line for wrestling. So I've reached out to them and we're fine crossing over into Missouri on a field trip like that. So he just needs your blessing to move forward with that field trip scheduling. Just how many are gonna go?
Yeah.
They'll fit on a bus.
Okay.
The junior class.
Junior class?
Yes.
Okay.
Press the move.
Okay. All second. Okay. Motion by David, seconded by TJ, that the USD 298 Board of Education approve the field trip to Union Station for the Auschwitz exhibition in Kansas City, Missouri on December 1st, 2021. It will be the junior class attending. Any other discussion? All in favor? Six oh. Okay. Now we have appointment of a USD 298 rep to the Lincoln County Rec Commission.
Kelly Schneider has filled in. If you remember, we had a lot of trouble finding somebody to fill that role. That term was not a full term, but that seat is coming vacant again. And we have a staff member that's interested in filling that. Michaela Zee has said that she would love to serve in that capacity. So it's my recommendation moving forward that Michaela be our advocate and move into that rec board seat.
I move the appointment, Michaela Zamenek, to serve as the USD 298 rep, commission representative.
All second.
Okay. Okay. Motion by Deb, seconded by Gina, that USD 298 Board of Education appoint Michaela Zamenek to represent USD 298 Board of Education on the Lincoln County Rec Commission. Any discussion? All in favor? Six oh. You want to carry on to the Salina Tech? I need a little tech support, please, tech support. Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna hold up here. I think they're on the phone with Summers.
One's from the street.
I don't remember the last time I went this long without the freeze. Not the snow, just cold.
One, one, one.
Okay. We're in a trying to set a meeting.
I was just going to log you log in on this one.
Yeah.
Scott, he asked me to try this email address. It's a Gmail address, he said to try that.
We were six oh on the Rec Commission. Deb moved, Gina seconded.
We haven't been there for two or three years since I'm leaving. There was something about continuing on state. The insurance company would cover up case.
But I could never spell mistake. Yeah, that's weird.
I don't know. I didn't ask, I guess.
Yeah, we had all entered. We never went.
I think he had changed some stuff around.
TV was.
Yes, TV.
Could be fortunate to share.
He's helping. They only have, they have their season like half, so like. Yeah, there's ever a Christmas break. Yeah, something like that. We change that. And like the boys, so like if the boys are home, girls go.
Oh, they go.
Yeah. The boys, yeah. That's what I mean, so they're in the 40th.
They're in the same way.
They're pretty easy.
Oh, yes, there you go. But NCAA, they give them all their depth. My nephew's in that at Jackson High. They, yeah, they, they, they're on, like, boys are home, girls are away, or vice versa. And you play in the same team. So, but I think like the elsewhere, the girls are home, but it's elsewhere.
If you're a basketball team, girls at.
Yeah.
So you have basketball.
I mean, I.
Rock, 310, and break for chocolate. We're joining the CK. I've got a 27 year old coworker. All that yellow stuff.
Pretend to kill each other to stop the nonsense. How to check that, that's a big one.
I have to start reading through a page by page. There's a speakerphone.
Another 10 and 1/2 documentation. Any errors will be corrected on the site.
That must be pretty simple.
Okay. We'll move on with our Salina Tech college update. Okay, so some of the things that, I'm sorry.
Can we grab here for minutes?
She don't watch the video.
I don't know that we're gonna move on. We're having a speakerphone here. But we can send them a speakerphone. I know we done lived in the past.
There's one in the pop room. And it has a little long cable.
The pop room has a long cable?
Yeah, the pop room has a phone, Scott.
Scott? Yes.
The pop room has a telephone. You want like a, can you do like a speakerphone?
Well, I don't know where we put it in.
Well, it's got like a really long. We bring it in here.
We've used.
Or you used to.
We're getting there. Can you hear me? I could not stop picking up the audio.
Are you there?
I'm tits here, I can hear you.
There we go. Took a while to boot up. Okay, I believe we're good to go.
Okay, so he can hear me off, or hear me perfectly?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Sounds great. Anyway, I have a video on my side, so I can't see anything going on there. But that's fine, as long as you can hear me talk back. There we go. Scott.
Get out of that one.
Well, I hope you enjoyed the audit report.
Allow that, allow that, allow. Spinning wheel down.
He's not responding. Not responding.
Yes, means it's locked, it's locked up.
Okay. Okay.
There it is. Thank you.
I'm sure we got. How did he didn't send me his Zoom link?
No, he initiated that.
We learn about the teams. Good, I'd like you to watch that. This lane, but I'm too superstitious. If I show up in the playoffs, they'll lose.
Yeah, the tough game, yeah, we got the team there very well.
Three weeks just passed.
Well, we have to have a projector to do the 298.
We're so.
Let me get back to my happy place here. You ready to move with this?
We can move with this. We should.
Let's move.
All right. So as you know, we have been looking at ways to best serve all of our students. Tomorrow, we are taking a group of students to Salina Tech just to expose them to the opportunities. We currently have 25 kids signed up between the junior and senior class. Over half of them are seriously interested in a technical college education. We have visited, myself, Mrs. Crenshaw, and Mrs. Flynn, visited NCK. And while there are some opportunities there, there are some strong limitations there, too. Scheduling is a limitation for us and our kids. The only program, well, the program that we could not send kids to would be welding because they're full all the time. And we have several kids who want to go into welding, a welding technical program. So Salina Tech came to Lincoln and presented to the staff or the admin team or whatever you want to call it at the high school. And now we're going to take kids there to visit with them. So I wanted to show you just some opportunities that they have here. My background is heavy in CTE and heavy in pathways. And I really believe that when you look at our statistical numbers, out of a graduating class that we have, we have a small percentage that go to four-year college. Data would show you that 50% of freshmen who start four-year colleges don't finish. They drop out. We have kids through interest inventories and everything else who are showing an interest in this type of educational pathway. So the difference between what I would say personally, NCK and Salina Tech, is the vast amount of courses that they offer. So under healthcare, I won't read it to you. I'll just let you see the areas that they do offer there. Automotive transportation. They have a CBL program. As does NCK. Construction trades, these are the areas that they have there. Manufacturing. So part of the investigations we've been doing there, we have a very limited staff at the high school to provide elective classes. They have qualified Mrs. Crenshaw to teach, based on her education, psychology as a course, as a dual-credit course, human development as a dual-credit course. And before she got her master's in counseling, she has a master's in math as well. And they will allow her to teach a dual-credit technical math. Part of the coursework that we talked about before of a, of a really applicable math for kids that want to go the technical college route. Here's our challenges, and I'm meeting, I'm going on this trip tomorrow. I'm meeting with their administrators there. We have some hurdles to overcome. The biggest one is transportation. Trying to figure out how to get kids there. They currently start their morning sessions at 7:30, which means our wheels would need to be rolling at about 6:30, 6:45 at the very latest. And I'm going to talk to them and see if there's any flexibility with that. We don't know if we can pull this off. But I will tell you, with all my heart, our kids deserve this somehow. I don't know how creative we can get. I've run some numbers on actually higher rate driver because we would have to have kids there in the morning. The driver would come back and pick up the afternoon session kids, drive back to Salina, bring back the morning kids, drive back to Salina, pick up the afternoon kids at the end of the day. It would cost us between $36,000 and $40,000 to hire somebody and for fuel a year, a school year, to get kids there. Now, I would tell you this, if I had 50% of a junior, senior class that was interested in this, that would be some of the best money we could invest if we could solve the problem. It sounds like a lot. And it probably is a lot. But that is something that we are underserving our kids on. Our location challenges us with internships and apprenticeships and different workplace experiences. These kids would come out of here with a credential, an industry-recognized credential that would count toward our effective rate in the state accreditation process and the expectations of the state. And if you're familiar with that effective rate, they want to see where a kid is two years after high school and see if they're in college, in a tech school, gainfully employed. So the two years that we have absolutely no control over a human being, they're holding us accountable for it. So the best thing to do is take these kids and get them some sort of an industry credential prior to graduation. And then they, as a student, are already 100% effective. The effective rate goal is 75%. 75% of all our kids need to have a credential, be in school, be employed two years after high school. So that's something we're looking at. I'll, we'll report back, actually, Mrs. Flynn, Mrs. Crenshaw will probably have a conversation with you at the December meeting because I've charged them with one thing, solve the problem. Solve the transportation problem, solve the time problem. But I'm going to meet with their administrators and see what flexibility there is on their part in all arenas, in meeting us, in helping us with transportation, and compensating for some transportation expense. Anything that we can do to get kids there. Because I'm telling you, this would have a huge impact on students' lives to leave high school with an employable skill. So that's, that's the update on Salina Tech as a. Mrs. Flynn, you want to add anything?
Couple things. One is, so a junior would go in the morning, and then your senior year, your second year, you go in the afternoon. So that's why there's a morning session and an afternoon session. So if you were on a two-year program, which all of their programs are two-year programs except, except for the diesel mechanic, it just doesn't work out. You would have to come back after high school to finish that program. And all the rest of them, if you started your junior year and your senior year and went both years, you would be done. The other piece of this that is really critical is, and we're struggling with right now, is any of our teachers to teach dual credit, it used to be a piece of cake. You had to have a master's degree, you could teach dual credit. Kids could have, you know, psych, social, college speech, English comp, college algebra, all of those things in-house. Kids could have, you know, psych, social, college speech, English comp, college algebra, all of those things in-house. Now that it's gone away because of the higher learning commission and you have to have a master's degree in the subject area that you teach, which most, unfortunately, most teachers do not get a master's in English or a master's in math, it's just not something that is normal. So Salina Tech, we talked to some of them, and they said that they have a little bit more flexibility. I don't know why, but they have a little bit more flexibility in how they can accredit our teachers to teach. So if they have a master's degree, years of experience, professional development, things like that, can give them a little bit more flexibility in the classes. So some of our teachers that are in like a transition plan that show that they're doing it, we might be able to have some of our teachers be able to teach college classes in-house instead of our kids taking them online, which is really, really beneficial. We have so many kids taking college classes online and it's not successful. It's not, it's not a good experience for them, I don't know how much they're learning, they're getting the credits, but they don't know that it's real valuable. So if we can somehow start transitioning some of our teachers in that, the other piece to that is the college classes are, the credit for credit are significantly cheaper. I believe, don't quote me for sure, but I have it written down, and when we present, I'll tell you, but I think it's around like $55 a credit hour. And we're getting a lot of classes right now through Cloud Barton, and they're more at over the $100 range. So our kids could get some gen eds for a significant savings. The other piece to this, all of these classes for the technical part are free to our kids. They will not have to pay anything other than, if they want, if they want the associates or they want the gen eds, they'd have to pay for those. But there, there might be some expendables like clothing, supplies, things like that that they'd have to pay for, but most everything else is completely free.
Fantastic.
Yeah, so we really just need to figure out a way to make it happen, which we're working on that.
So I would say this, I would applaud the high school team for all the work they're doing on this. They're finding out where our kids need, they're not being constrained by the typical box. They're trying to figure out how to live in a world where there is no box and solve problems. And they've spent a lot of time on this, so it'll be exciting to see what we can have for the board in December. We're not looking at next semester, we're looking at next fall. We have a lot of time to plan, and it's going to take a lot of planning, so, anyway.
Ready to go back?
Okay. Tim, needless apologies, can you hear me? I'm really sorry for the confusion and the downtime. I appreciate it. I've got some audio issues here, I'm trying to figure out why you're not going up to the bigger speaker. Can you, you can have a shock face that we've got another technical problem if you weren't for the board. Oh, really? There you go, now you're, now you're good, good to go.
Okay.
Okay, all right, very good. I'm just gonna jump into things here, introduce myself. My name is Tim Banworth, and I'm audit manager, I guess, CPAs. And I oversaw and reviewed the audit. I know that Craig and Tori were instrumental in doing the fieldwork. And I want to thank you and your staff there for bringing everything to them timely and so we're able to present the audit tonight. There are basically three main pieces of an audit that we share with you. There is a required communication letter that the audit firm is, is to give to the board. Just talks about essentially the overall findings of the audit in various ways. There's the actual audit report itself, you know, which is, which is, you've seen, based on KMAC, in our opinion, on those financial statements, on those financial statements, reports with KMAC. And then there is the comment letter, just some things that we did find and some areas for improvement that the district can put together for years coming forward. So what I usually like to do, and I'll spend about maybe five to 10 minutes over these three documents, and talk about the required communications that we gave to you. That's one of the letters with our letterhead at the top, and it says, "To the Board of Education, USD 296."
Hey, Tim.
On, just mention that.
That's 298, if you, if you have to type on your document, we're two days long.
Did I say, did I say 296?
Yes, sir.
I, I read 29, I read, it says 298 on the screen. Who knows? Anyway, USD 298. So we audited the statement, the fund summary statement of receipts expenditures and unencumbered cash as of June 30, 2021, and the fiscal year for the, for the prior 12 months. That's the area that we covered in the audit. We do look at some subsequent events, that is the period that the opinion is under. So that's one of the things we do mention right up front, that is the period we look at. We don't audit anything after that date. And in our engagement letter that we sent you, that also describes management responsibilities and our responsibilities under generally accepted auditing standards. And that was a engagement letter that was signed back in May. One of the things we also talked about is the responsibility of accounting policies, and it's always the responsibility of management. Note two in the financial statement in the audit report, that is where it describes the existing policies. And there, we noted there were no major changes in policies this year, as well as there were no transactions and what we, that lacked authoritative guidance. Basically, the accounting was up to par, up to speed. And all significant transactions haven't recognized in these financial statements. One of the other things we also have to talk, disclose to you is what the most sensitive disclosures are in your financial statements in the notes, and that for you guys is the disclosures of the basis of accounting not being under GAAP but being under KMAC, just a different type of accounting that you guys. There were no difficulties in performing the audit, everything went smoothly, working with management. We also have to talk about any corrected and uncorrected statements. All the statements that we defined were corrected. In fact, you had, there was just one, and that is the recording of deposits and transit a year ahead that we defined as, as part of the audit. With the total amount of proceeds adding to two more financial statements for the year of about $198,000 for the state equalization aid as well as supplemental stating. So that is the one audit entry that was done for the year. Back to the, back to the letter itself, we also talked about any disagreements with management, and there were none. And also, we are required to discuss whether there are any accounts, the other independent accounts, and that, to refer to get a second opinion, and to our knowledge, there were none, no opinion shopping, no looking for another opinion on your audit of financial statements. Okay, so that is, that is basically the required communication letter summarized, no issues on that one at all. What I do want to hop over to is the audit report itself, it's the long, long document with our opinion. And page one, three is where our audit report is. It's on the second page of, of the, of the audit report itself. That's where we talked about our unmodified opinion. It is our opinion that the financial statement that we did audit and after the adjustment was made, was, was correct in all material respects in accordance with KMAC. And that, that note is, and that's discussed in two of your financial statements. What that really means is that you have a clean opinion on the financial statements. After all, the adjustments were done in accordance to KMAC. We do, it does show the adverse opinion on US, according to GAAP, of course, you get the GAAP waiver, so we do have to include that in according to KMAC with the verbiage that's noted there above. So that is a clean opinion of your financial statement. And as part of your financial statement, I do briefly, I'll look at that, of course, beside the statement one with, with the funds, and that's on page four and five, the financial statements. And really, at the end of the day, we look at the, the composition of cash in comparison to the statement ending balance, where the cash is for, the summation of your funds is something I do like to point out, how much is in your checking versus your savings and CDs and how it ties out to the fund balance. You've seen these numbers before, so it's, it's nothing new. But I also always like to see the total amount of receipts and expenditures for the year. That is briefly there on the second page of statement one. Total receipts of over $7.28 and total, and expenditures of about $6.8. So increase in your unencumbered cash of around, around $400,000-ish or so between the two years. So that's one of the things I do like to, do like to have a look at when, when presenting. The notes are pretty standard for this year of the audit, for your audits. KMAC pretty much tells us what to write, so it's, it's not much of a change on a year-to-year basis. There is one note we do have put in this year, it should be in there. It talks about COVID, it's note 12, it's a new one. Just talks about the big disruption, of course, in the US economy based on COVID. And there's uncertainties. So basically, the duration and extent to which the COVID impacts the financial performance of the district is unknown at this time. I know for the most part, most districts did see some changes in funding because of it. It changed in, of course, where the expenditures go, more money coming in, new monies. But we just don't know what the impact is going to be for the long term, so. So that's, that's the audit report itself. You know, you can read all the fund summaries in the back of the supplementary schedule. The supplementary information, just so you know, throughout the schedules one through four, those are also derived from the general ledger, and we do have to point that out. So that's where the, that's where the schedule is actually came from. So clean opinion on the audit report, and no, no significant disagreements in regards to the audit itself. The last thing I wanted to kind of briefly to talk about is your, what do you call our, our comment letter? And what it says, what it says, what it basically says to you is, anything that we found, any deficiencies in your, in your controls at the district is in this letter. As part of an audit, what we do is we look at the controls of the district. We don't give an opinion on the effectiveness of the controls of the district. We simply look at the controls and see if there's any deficiencies in those, in those, in the design of your internal controls. There was one this year, it is a significant deficiency, and I believe it's also happened, it also added to pass in regards to significant adjustments. Because they said, because you did have to adjust your financial statements for the deposit and transit, and it was a significant amount. We determined there was, that there was a lack of controls on getting the final amounts in totality because of the significance of that audit adjustment, so. So really, we're saying there is some, a room for improvement in the controls of getting all your information included in the financial statements prior to getting those to us to audit. There are some other opportunities we believe that the district can use to strengthen your controls. On the bank reconciliations, they're done, and they tie out. Just an additional, for someone who is not involved in doing the reconciliation, to sign off on that reconciliation to review and, for approval, and that they review it. That's something, those recommend for the district, and of course, all the individual schools of the district. As well as adjusting journal entries. There were no, there was no review of the journal reports that are done monthly. And so one of the things we say, one of the things we recommend is have someone who is not involved in doing those journal entries sign off and review those journal entries to make sure that they, they make sense. And the last, and one thing we also have to do point out is we do, we do testing of hearing invoices. We did notice that out of the 25 checks, we found there were two of them that did not have an approval. It's most likely it's been oversight, we didn't have most of them on there. We just recommend to continue to be diligent and make sure that every single expense to the district is, has that initial approval. We saw, and we did a review of those invoices to make sure that they were legitimate expenses, and they were. It's just that sign of approval that was missing on those. Just be diligent, continue to be diligent on signing and reviewing everything that is, that is an expense to the district. The last one is, is regards to gate receipts for activities. Just, we're recommending a control of handling the receipts, of having a documented form that is, that is signed over every time the cash is involved. Essentially saying how much cash was received for that particular event, for that picture, for that particular night. And that would be signed a document, people handling the cash, and that would be lined up with the deposit after it's done. So we'll see the chance of any errors of the cash accounts being missed, missing or missing. So those are just some areas of improvement, better included in the comment letter. A note goes to be what we call material needs. No, we're not specifically concerned, just some ideas that we have, I'd like to point out to the district for one group. That's something that as an auditor, we're required to present to you, so. So just kind of summarize, the audit report had a cleaner opinion on the financial statements. And throughout the audit, there were no other significant findings in regards to disagreements, anything postponing. Everything seemed, had the appropriate backup. And just we wanted to list out some ideas and some of the controls to implement in the future, so. That's five of my 10 minutes still, so. I remember presentation first time by management, and then we continue the process of finalizing the audit and sending it to the state. And I'm open to any questions that anyone might have.
We do do that with the gate receipts. I was gonna say, because I just took gate.
Are they turned in maybe? Are they not turned in with audit?
And maybe he just doesn't realize, oh, we do that, but we do that with the gate receipts. Because every time that I've ever taken gate, there was a sheet there, how much you start with, how much you end.
Thank you very much, Tim.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and Scott, I know Greta has the letter. Once that's signed up by you, we can get you on the process.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Okay, if I could follow up on that, we do, I don't know why they put those areas of concern, but let me explain them to you. Greta does verify bank reconciliations. The two invoices that did not have my signature on them were reimbursements to me. But to be compliant, I submitted a reimbursement today, they recommended then that a board member sign off on it, and I believe you signed off on some mileage expenses. So we will now have all the blanks filled in, but I didn't feel like I should sign my own. So I just left it blank, so that was what I, we do do activity funds with a document in there to verify what, what is received before a gate worker starts, and it's counted at the end and documented, and that should match. So honestly, without getting into it with an auditor, the blank signatures, okay, get it. I don't know why they, they dinged us on gate receipts for the last couple of years.
Every year, and we believe they're doing that.
They come in summer, and Christie's gone, she was gone, and so we didn't have the, you know, the sheets. It was like, you know, we said, well, we are doing that, and they still, yeah.
I will tell you this, if you haven't figured it out yet, I'm pretty tight. So two years ago, our audit fee was $6,700, or two years ago. Last year, when we got audited, included the FEMA shelter, which was over $750,000 in federal funds, which triggered a federal audit. So that audit bill was $11,000 and some change. This year, the audit bill that we got was $7,500. So we were going to investigate whether or not that's the right place because it's gone up $900 since two years ago for the audit. So I'm keeping an eye on the expense of this activity as well, just so you know.
And that is an area of concern.
I know that the guy before always said that was always one place you had to watch for something, because it was someplace where people could steal money.
Yeah.
We're always very careful who takes gate.
We're in good shape.
I think so.
Okay. Well, I will tell you what, if you could see everybody scrambling around here during an audit, it is a huge round of applause to cater to their every request and have all the documents ready. And I know that Greta and Nancy and Norma work their tails off to prepare for that. So a big thank you to you guys.
Okay, I have a motion by TJ. Second by David. The USD 298 Board of Education approved the 2020-2021 audit performed for USD 298 Lincoln by Summer Spencer and Company. Any discussion? All in favor? Six of them. Okay. Now, getting back to somewhere, wherever we left off, before we left off. I think we're at calendar discussion, item 8A.
And I'd just like to inform you, we've got some new faces on the calendar committee. It is very exciting. It's very vibrant, and they are actively seeking a very functional and amicable calendar. The negotiated agreement would say that we would have a calendar in November, but I'm telling you, it's not there yet, because we're just really looking at how we can best utilize our time. We currently have 184 employee contract days. We have 171 student contact days. I'm adamant that we do not reduce student contact days. If anything, we increase it, because that's the business we're in. So we're having great discussion. We're getting there. I would like to present to you an idea this evening. There are a lot of districts, and there's a lot of buzz going on right now about Thanksgiving break. Many districts are allowing their staff to have the entire week off Monday and Tuesday included in the Thanksgiving break. It is hard for a person to understand the drain of a classroom day in and day out. There are joys and there are sorrows in almost every single day. And if a teacher is effective and working well, they're exhausted at the end of the day, and yet they go home and they continue working, and they grade papers, and they prepare for the next day, and they spend weekends and family time. Although it doesn't seem like COVID impacted us much, emotionally, it's impacted everybody. Our staff is tired. They have been working their tails off with this onslaught of new curriculum. They are trying to get ahead of the eight ball and stay ahead of it. So I am going to ask that the board consider allowing them to have Monday and Tuesday off of the Thanksgiving break as well, to really get themselves recharged. I'm in classrooms a lot, and I'm just going to tell you, we don't slack in our classrooms, and our people are tired. And so I would just throw that out there for your consideration, that moving forward into Thanksgiving week, we say thank you. I have days built in with our 171 days. The state expectation is 1116 hours. We are over 80 hours more than what the state minimum is, as we should be. We should be over the state minimum. But for this particular situation, it's been at home two years, and our people are tired. And so I would ask you to consider that for this year's calendar, amendment to this year's calendar, to allow Thanksgiving break to be Monday, Tuesday, and the normal Thanksgiving break.
Thoughts? Share? This is new versus here, so.
We have families that will struggle to find something to do with their children's days, because they work. And I've heard a lot of families talk about how much time they've missed because of quarantine and some things like that. Can we find some days for our teachers that aren't contact days? Can we eliminate an in-service or a workday or two for them as a reward? So that doesn't impact families so much? I know we've had a lot of kids that have missed quite a bit of school. A way to reward them that doesn't have such an impact. Not all our families can take the whole week of Thanksgiving off. They don't all have daycare with their little kids. They don't have, don't all have like a family person to take them for the whole week.
Anyone else?
I was leaning that, I mean, I'm very appreciative of the fact that it's wrong, but I was leaning that same way.
Can we eliminate a workday, an in-service day? Can we give them a reward in that way?
And that's two less, two contact days. And when we're discussing the calendars, like, we want to make sure that contact is there.
I can see both sides. I mean, I can see the teachers needing, but I can't, yeah. I'm worried about the fact that families, it could be hardship for parents to...
No, our families have daycare, and we have such a daycare shortage in our community. A lot of parents don't have someone to take their kids for...
Yes, for someone who gives them a whole week to travel and go do something, but for others that have to work, it creates a bit of a challenge, so.
But our teachers deserve something, you know? Can we find some workdays or in-service days that we could reward them with the day off and stay?
Wednesday, Thursday afternoon day.
This week?
Every Wednesday.
No, I mean, Thanksgiving. It's off. Wednesday's off. Okay. For some reason, obviously, happy day. Happy day. Okay.
Rent a theater for those two days and just play movie. You and I could cover class.
Couple days on the farm?
I was just gonna say, a day on the farm. We just used to have...
Yeah.
Maybe small children possibly.
Yeah.
The ones that are helping are gonna be helping.
Yeah.
We've filed labor laws.
I'm just presenting it because I feel where people need it. You tell me what to do, and I'll execute it.
It was just an idea that other districts have been throwing around, and I feel it's a little bit short notice to be in two weeks, you know? It's kind of, if everybody plans for that ahead of time, it gives them a little...
Can we find like a workday or two that we could reward them with a day to be more flexible or something for themselves?
I can do anything.
Can we find some of that?
I'll do anything you direct me to do.
Well, and if we do, I mean, if that's the case, we wouldn't have to decide on that tonight.
Right. Well, unlike, those are days parents already know they have, they already know that, you know, because we have a plan those days for kids to be at home. But any of you, something to them?
We're probably already at the minimum, I believe. We are bored, and we have to discuss this, and so if the feeling is around the table that we continue on as the calendar is, then that's... I'm getting the feeling from at least three that we stay, whether TJ and Gina. Do you have, you've been pretty quiet.
I've been quiet. I get it over. No, I definitely agree that in a lot of workforces, families deserve something for these years that they've been, but it's okay. The difficult thing is, and I hear that there, there's a lot of parents that work out of town, and the short notice and being able to take extra days off to take care of the kids if they have little ones might be difficult for them to do. So I'm more, also due to the short notice, if that's something we can plan for the future, great. But if we can do something else with some other days, that's my personal feeling.
Maybe we can look forward to spring semester right now or in the next month and come back with some days in December that we could look at for, it doesn't do much good for all the days they've had stacked up now, but it's...
I just wanted to share with you that I am going to make a commitment to Green Bush to be our E-rate consultant, if you will. Last couple of years, we've used Smokey Hill, and they charged, if you paid a membership fee to them, they charged eight percent of the E-rate total as their billing. If you were not a member, they charged 10%. So I tried to only use them for E-rate only, and they told me that if that's all you're gonna use, it's gonna be 10%. But the eight percent last year, it was forty three hundred dollars for the E-rate fees, and Green Bush's fees will be about 50% less than that. So I'm gonna make that move to save money, just keeping you in the loop. I'm a Green Bush guy, and we've moved a lot of our membership over to them, and now that E-rate is over there, I see us becoming a Green Bush district. And I know it has split back and forth with superintendents as they move here and there. It was probably unfortunate that just for one year, everything all of a sudden got shifted for a one-year term, but I think the administrators would agree, most of the staff would agree that Green Bush just has a multitude, significantly more opportunities for support and training and everything else. That's my arena of comfort, and I have a lot of good, solid relationships there, so I just want to keep you in the loop that operationally, we're moving in that direction, and just this one move will save us over $2,000.
Kind of save everyone.
Plus the $1,300 membership fee. So in reality, this will be a net out of over $3,000. Keep it in the loop.
Absolutely. Good job.
Thank you. Moving on to admin reports, I think you had your principal reports in your packet. Nikki's here, anything you would like to add since then, or?
Thank you for approving the trip to Kansas City. I know over the state line is always an issue, but I felt like it was such a great opportunity for our kids to be able to see a traveling, basically, museum and a great opportunity for our juniors, because that's what they're studying right now. So that's nice. Also, I would encourage all of you to come out to the musical on Friday, or Saturday and Sunday, or Saturday or Sunday. I mean, we're coming both days. It's Saturday night at seven and Sunday at two, and they have been working very hard every day after school to get ready for that and putting props together and all that. Kind of, it's kind of all starting to come together on the stage, so.
Do you have any real feel for what's up with parent-teacher conferences?
Our fall ones are always low. I was looking back at some of the notes that Christie had saved and left for me, and they are, I don't know if as kids get older, and parents are not as likely to go to parent-teacher conferences with the availability of Power School.
I say Power School gives parents so much information that a lot of them get it there.
Yes, and I know as a parent myself, when my kids' grades change, it notifies me on my phone instantly. And so if you have a parent that is that involved in their Power School grades, they are well aware if kids are failing or passing, or what assignments they miss, or tests they failed or didn't fail, and usually the contact has already been made by the teacher or the parent. We, kids that we see struggling about insert classes, we've already probably met with the kids, the parents, we've had parent meetings already. So I think that really is...
And the advisor helps with that, too.
Yes, they don't, they decide, well, I've already talked to, I was here last week, or I was here two weeks ago, and they just don't feel the need to come. We are going to discuss this Thursday, in-service ways that we can make it, change it. You know, in the spring, the high school does student-led conferences, and that really increases our percentages, but I don't know what a fall conference would look like yet. I need to keep researching.
I have had somebody tell me that a school that their child went to, some of their teachers give the kids extra credit points if their parents showed up to parent-teacher conferences. If your parents come, you get a couple of points, and sometimes that's an incentive.
To encourage their parents to come.
Yeah, give their kids some points by showing up and seeing the teacher.
That would be encouraging.
It's a unique way, yeah.
Yeah. Well, one of the discussions we had, I think, Mr. Crenshaw and I, we talked about parent-teacher conferences have been the same for the last 45 years. We haven't changed, but times have changed, and so we probably need to do some adjusting. And I don't know if parents would be welcoming to that or not, but sometimes change is hard.
Thanks, Nikki.
And that's, you said the musical?
Yes.
The musical's on Saturday at 7:00 PM, November 13th, and Sunday at 2:00 PM. So if anyone didn't hear that, we'll repeat that again.
Well, I'm gonna start the superintendent report with some fantastic news.
Ask him to send a different one later.
Well, my whole thing is all exciting this time. So we got money. We got money. I've always been in money, and I'm always asking in the mail, did we get a check? We got checks. We have our cemetery refund from our last February apocalyptic cold, except in Lincoln, where you wear a jacket, it wasn't that cold, right? But we got $6,420 back from our cemetery refund. Thank you to KSB's risk management team for continuing to negotiate and pursue that ridiculous gas bill that we had. EMC Insurance averaged their last three years, and they're a dividend-paying company. We got a check for $3,783 from EMC as our dividend payout. It pales in comparison to our 80-plus-thousand-dollar premium, but every little bit helps. So that's good. Another thing that I wanted to let you all know and patrons know is that the report cards, the KSD report cards have been updated, so all of our performance is online now, and it is current, as current as they keep it. So if you want to Google KSDE report card, you can go right to it, type in the district, and look at everything from assessment scores to graduation rates to post-secondary success, all kinds of information. And we're in a good place, and we're on the road to getting better every single day, so I'm excited for that. I got an email from Dr. Randy Watson, Commissioner of Education, to let us know that, again, for high school graduation, we were recognized as a Bronze Star recognition. For students being academically prepared for post-secondary, we have a Copper Star recognition. For post-secondary success, we have a Bronze Star recognition, and we did get the Commissioner's Award as a school district. So just to let you know, things are, things are going well. Our staff is making a difference, and our students' performances are showing it. So I'm really excited about that. Now, I'm excited to get into some energy science nerd stuff with you, because I was really excited this week about some of the stuff that I'm learning. So last month, we used, well, the last bill that I got, let me take that back, that would be our August bill. We used about 71,000 kilowatt-hours of electricity. The high school alone was 44,000 kilowatts. Our bill was $12,000. That's a little spiky for me. So I have been doing tons of research, and I met with two companies this past week. One was Kansas LED out of Kansas City, and the other was called Oklahoma LED. And we walked buildings, and we talked about LED lighting as an alternative to the fluorescent bulbs that we have. And here's what I want to share with you. First of all, our electricity cost is between 13 cents and 15 cents per kilowatt hour. Both sales reps were completely shocked by that. Oklahoma said down there, they pay six cents a kilowatt hour. Oklahoma said down there, they pay 6 cents a kilowatt hour. The Kansas City guy said it's maybe 10 cents a kilowatt hour. So we have high utility bills. So how do we counter that? Again, it's like everything else I've talked about, efficiencies, 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 efficiencies. So let me give you some nerdy facts. A typical four-foot T8 fluorescent light bulb, right, right up here, burns 32 watts of energy. A hybrid T8 four-foot fluorescent LED bulb will burn 14 to 15 watts, 50% reduction in energy usage. And the reason I use hybrid is a lot of people don't understand, if you put an LED light up there and it's not hybrid, they are not ballast-controlled, so you have to remove the ballast and hardwire the lighting. A hybrid light bulb allows you just to screw in a light bulb, it operates on a ballast or without a ballast, both. So you can continue to run the lifespan of the ballast, then when the ballast dies, you hardwire and keep those same lights. So the other exciting thing, and I can tell you're just on the edge of your seats, a three, a four-bulb system like this transferring to LED can get the exact same lumens with two bulbs. So right now, four times 32. 128 watts on the fixture right above me. That would go to 28 watts with two LED hybrid light bulbs. That's a significant reduction in energy costs. $4 light bulb, $7 LED hybrid bulb. So as I scrape for every penny out there, we estimate at our walk there, there's about 800 light bulbs in the high school, junior high, high school alone. $5,600 would replace all the fluorescent light bulbs in one fell swoop. It would reduce our energy consumption in those bulbs by approximately 50%. Haven't pulled the trigger on it yet, but I'm excited about it so far. I'm continuing to research. Oklahoma LED is gonna come into a complete light audit. They're gonna take the cover off it, every fluorescent fixture we have, write down the bulb number in case it has different brightness. They're gonna calculate our entire watt usage with our current bulbs. So we're not gaining money from the state, we're not gaining students, so we have to get leaner and meaner and brighter. And this is a way that we can do that. I just made that up. Let me give you an example. In our gymnasium, we have some fluorescent bulbs, but we also have still some metal halide bulbs. There are some fluorescent replacements in the, in the LES gym, all LED replaced screw-in bulbs. So Stanley Electric gave me this, gave Dennis this information, and he shared it with me. And just so you know, a kilowatt hour is 1,000 watts of draw in an hour. 1,000 is a kilo, so we have a kilowatt hour, 1,000 watts for one hour. A 400-watt metal halide that we have uses a kilowatt hour every 2.155 hours. So 1,000 watts every 2.155 hours. The same LED lamps that we have at the grade school, you get 10 hours of use before you burn a kilowatt hour of power. It is significant, and everybody that I've talked to about saving money is saying the exact same thing. The low-hanging fruit is your electrical expense for lighting. Our lights are on 12 hours a day. Unfortunately, if you walk through the buildings, some are on 24 hours a day. When we have community access to our gymnasium, which is one of our largest energy-burning light systems, then that's on all the time. So I just, I, I find it exciting, I think it's an opportunity to save money, and I just wanted to let you know that I'm continuing to investigate that. Fixed costs are where we need to get really lean in getting.
We changed a lot of our storage to save money.
You did?
We also applied for a REAP grant that we received to help cover some of the costs as well. It was for energy efficiency, and, yeah, I'm getting, got one at Mighty Mark this year too, to change out some of ours and to do some other energy efficiency upgrades.
The other thing for our staff and our kids, and, and I had LED lights put in my office when I got here, fluorescent lights have a flicker factor, and they kind of can, they're not as conducive to your brain as, as LED lights. And I don't know, maybe everybody knows that, but I can't stand that flickery thing. It gives me a headache.
We've seen, we've seen the savings.
It doesn't say longevity is better.
Yes.
And the bulbs last for years, it's like too long.
They're claiming 10 years, but that was a saleswoman, I used to be in sales.
It doesn't happen in our house that way. We're so frustrated with LED lights, we're always replacing them.
Really?
The screw-in bulbs?
Yeah.
We've never had any, we've got a bunch of them in the bank, and I just forget to change them.
Comforter guy recommended some new ones, and, and they're out faster than they're old ones. And so my concern is, you always put in seven lights, just, what's the real, what's it gonna be when it really comes down to it? Are we gonna save?
They're guaranteed for five years. The bulb replacement, replacement for five years on these LEDs. And so it'll take some management of, are we gonna swoop through and do them in one building all at once and do another building another year so that we know the date? Or otherwise, we're gonna have to pull those panels down and start writing, sharpie dates next to the bulbs, so when one goes out, you know.
That's what we started doing, was writing the date on the bulbs, and, and if you don't buy those, I don't know, but understand, our house is really frustrating.
The ones that are like this, I haven't changed a bulb at Mighty Mark since I've been there, not one.
LED?
Not a, not a single bulb. I want no, I don't even have any.
Do you know if you had the hybrids with the ballasts?
No, we changed them, we changed them out.
Okay.
And by we, I don't mean me.
I just, you know, when everybody told me it was low-hanging fruit, I just wanted you to know I'm pursuing it. I haven't committed anything, doing research, but it could really be an opportunity. When you think that our average bill is probably $7,000 a month, that's much as our insurance premium.
And you said the audit that they do could tell us what our lights are using, and then we'll know what the rest is, and possibly know whether we're.
Yes, they'll take every kilowatt hour of light based on the bulb with a 12-hour expectation of being on, then they'll back that kilowatt hour usage into our actual electric bill so that we can see what our HVAC systems are using and any other electrical component in there. But we're gonna get the actual energy usage for the lights alone. No cost for the audit, of course, they're trying to sell, but, you know.
Better puts on that money toward heating and, I see.
We, we are in the process of reprogramming our heating and cooling systems.
Bring your jackets.
Jacket.
That's exciting stuff. That's all I have.
Yes, it is.
Anything else you don't want to report on the grand conference that you went to?
Oh, well, I can't say, I guess I should have put that on there. We, Gina and John and I attended the KSB convention over the weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday morning, and first one I've been to. What a phenomenal experience, what a huge support network, and the ability to, to network with and just talk, and talk about issues and talk about solutions, and the breakout sessions were phenomenal. I thought that was a weekend well spent. I, I don't know what you guys thought.
Nikki, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I took pictures of tons of slides and things that I'm gonna get printed off that we can either use at our workday or going forward to other meetings, just, yeah, just information we got from other schools and the breakout sessions that I think are good.
Yes, yes. Very, I thought it was very good, and it's, it's encouraging to talk to people that are going through similar things that you are, and it's also makes you glad to be in rural America when you hear what's going on in some of the bigger areas, so there, there are positives and negatives to where we are, but, no, it was time well spent. Next, we will move on to, we have an executive session for personnel, and, okay, Nikki to stay for that, we're probably looking at 30 minutes or just start?
Sounds good.
I'm going to go to executive session in 30 minutes.
I'll start you.
Motion by David, seconded by Deb, that the USD 298 Board of Education go into executive session at 8:30 for 30 minutes with the superintendent for the purpose of discussing personnel matters for non-elected personnel, and that the board return to open meeting at 9 o'clock in the Board of Education conference room. The executive session is required to protect the privacy of non-elected personnel exempt under COVID. All in favor? Six, seven. And with Nikki's name, sorry.